Good evening. I'd like to call the Forsyth County Board of Education meeting to order. Today is July 17th and it's six o'clock. At this time, Tom Kleben will lead us in the invocation.
Please stand. I spent this week looking at, you know, things that inspire me and try to understand. And I was looking at quotes and just trying to spend some reflection time, you know, in my life. And came across a real simple one that meant a lot. It said, "The struggle ends when the gratitude begins." And that's something we've been talking as a board about within the system is instilling gratitude in our kids as they learn about everything else. And their struggles seem to begin to end. And so that was really profound to me tonight. And so I wanted to say a public word of gratitude to Ann for her service on the board this year and as she starts to move on in her life and appreciate everything you've done over the years. And if we'll just take a moment to reflect on those things of our life that we're grateful for. Please salute as we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd like to especially welcome our scouts here. What troop number are you?
457.
457? Well, welcome. And we will have a kind of brief meeting and we'll have some reports that are done. And then if you have any questions after the meeting that you would like to ask, we'll stick around a little bit and you're welcome to come up and ask us. All right? Okay. You all have had time to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second for discussion.
A motion by Tom and second for Kristen. All in favor? You want to change the consent agenda now or make a motion to pull something out?
Just want to pull something out so we can discuss it.
All right. Okay, let's approve the agenda with pulling out. What do you want to pull out?
Pull up Pools Mill.
Okay.
Presentations.
All right.
We'll put it under presentations. It doesn't have to be approved.
I'll make that motion.
It has to go under action.
Right. We're going to move it to action. That's right.
Yeah, I got the presentation.
Right. It's going to go to action. Okay?
Make that motion, so my second.
All right, you're going to make a motion to approve with the change.
Well, to approve the change.
Make a motion to approve. All right.
Prove the agenda.
And then we approve that and then we can make it prove as amended.
Okay. All right, you're going to second it, Kristen?
Yes, please.
Tom made the motion, Kristen seconded it. All in favor? unanimous? Okay, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended.
I'll make that motion.
I thought that's what you just did.
No, we just approved the amendment to change it.
Got it. Okay. Dara? Nancy? All right, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we have, there's no public participation, nobody's here.
We have to.
And now what do we do?
We have to approve the consent agenda.
You're ahead of us.
All right. All right, now you got it all, Kristin.
I should have given her heads up earlier so we could have think it through. So my thoughts were thrown then.
That's okay. All right.
I'll make a motion and we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Okay. All right, motion by Tom and second by Nancy. All in favor? Got it. All right, now we're on track. Okay, no public participation, presentations. We'll start with Forsyth Teacher Academy with Beth Abear and Linda Reed.
Do it with my right hand. I'm left-handed, but we'll see if I can manage that. Thank you for allowing us to come in and talk to you about the Forsyth Teacher Academy, something that we're real proud of. I don't know how many of you know Linda Reed. And just to tell you, give you a little information about Linda, she was a teacher with us for many years and left to go to the university. Bad decision. Not really. But when she left, she did some contract work for us over induction. And so she's really designed our induction program over the past couple of years. And so she's come back on to help us with the TAP program and we're happy to have her with us here. So we're going to just give you a little bit of information. So you all know that we were approved in the spring to be an EPP and that's what the PSC approves you to be, an educator preparation provider. And basically, we are approved just as universities are approved to be a teacher prep program. So we go through the same process. It was a pretty long process. We have to meet all their standards, all of their rules. Every three years, we'll have a full review where they'll come in and make sure that we're doing everything we need to be doing. In the meantime, we collect data, bring our data to our advisory board, talk about things that we might need to do better or what can we add to it and then continually improve. So it's a continuously improving process that we're going to go through. So we have an advisory board and you'll see that this is pretty much, we have people that are represented from different departments here. A pretty large advisory board, but we're glad to have that because we get input from all different departments. You'll see on the advisory board Sharon Erickson and Brenda Schultz and you'll probably remember them, both of them as being retired leaders. We're real excited to have them as our supervisors. They will be external supervisors for us, but they're also coming with some really good information. Brenda works with NTPA at the university level. We'll talk about that in a little while. That's an assessment that candidates will have to take. And so she's going to be in charge of our boot camp for that. So we're kind of getting two things for one. And then Sharon Erickson is a clinical supervisor and she has been for us when we've used Metro Reza or some of the other programs. So she comes with experience and we're happy about that. We also have a parent, Steve Dabs, who's real excited about being on the board. He's a central parent and has really enjoyed the meetings that he's been to so far. So we're excited about having him helping us out there. So when we first started talking about this and talking about the TAP program, the non-traditional certification program, we really were just looking at that. But as Linda came on board with me and we started trying to organize what we're going to do for teachers in this program, we realized it was more than that. So Forsyth Teacher Academy, think of it as the umbrella really of these four programs. So under Forsyth Teacher Academy, we'll have teacher induction. Linda will talk to you a little bit about that. And then the non-traditional certification, which is the TAP, what PSC calls the TAP program. And then endorsements and professional development. So we'll just share a little bit about each of those with you.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here and I'm excited to share Forsyth Teacher Academy with you. It's been a joy to create it collaboratively across district departments and under the leadership of Beth and Cindy, it's been phenomenal. It's been a joy as a teacher to see the program evolve. So I just want to talk to you a little bit about teacher induction. As of this week, we've hired 383 new teachers.
Isn't that the most ever?
It's huge.
It's right on track with what we've had in the past.
Right. 127 are new positions and 211 are replacement positions. So it's pretty exciting. Some of those teachers are brand-new teachers and some are experienced teachers. So we have differentiated induction for them because we want to retain our experienced teachers who are coming to us from other states and other districts. So new teachers get a differentiated approach as well. First-year teachers get a one-to-one mentorship and they focus on content area. So they really, we really know that they have their content knowledge second year. It's on classroom management, behavior management, time management, organization, because we know we lose teachers to lack of organization and classroom management. And then year three, we take them to research-based strategies and data-informed decision-making. So it's a progressive approach. And then when we have our experienced teachers, we differentiate for them as well because they're coming to us with a wealth of experience and we want to fast-track them to leadership and give them a voice. So they don't say, "Well, back in Ohio, we used to," and feel like there's a difference between where they were and where they are now. So we have district support, we have school-based support, we have an induction leader at every school, and we are bringing things on that are new and fresh every year. This year, look for increased mentor training and mentor criteria so that we're really giving them the best kind of support we can.
You're going to go through all of that.
Oh, and I talk so quickly.
That's okay. That's okay. So the non-traditional route to certification. You heard her say collaborative and we are, this has been a collaborative effort. Linda has worked closely as we designed the program. She's worked really closely with all of our departments. And she's met many times with people in teaching and learning and special ed department and technology and student support services. So all of those people have helped us design the program. So it wasn't just us and HR sitting there deciding to do that. We have been pretty selective with the candidates that we have taken. We have over, we had over 100 applications when we first kicked it out. Surprised us too. But we were selective in that. There are certain qualifications that we have and we looked closely at those and to decide who was the best candidates. We want to make sure that they're good, solid candidates coming into our program. You know, these teachers, whether a teacher is a 20th-year teacher or a first-year teacher, they are going to impact students. So we're hoping that our program affects that impact. And that's really the lens that we look at when we're trying to decide what to do. And one of the good things about having, doing our own program, you know, we've had TAP candidates from other, from Metro Reza. We've used Metro Reza several times to do our TAP, to have our TAP candidates come through. But a couple of years ago, Elaine Wilson and I were talking and we just realized we could be more cost-effective and we could do a better job. And we could make it our Forsyth way. So we really were able to infuse a learner profile into that and I think it makes a big difference when we're training your own teachers. When teachers come to us, they have to have a full-time job offer. So we had about 100 who filled out the application. Principals, they would interview with principals. Principals would contact us. We would talk about whether they had met the qualifications or not, whether we thought they could, because there's some tests they have to take down the road. And then, but they had to have that offer to get into the program. We knew we didn't have capacity at the beginning to just offer it to all certification areas. So we really focused on the critical area and the hard-to-fill positions, the CTA positions, math and science, middle and high, and special ed. So those are the areas that we offered it. They have to have a bachelor's degree. That's essential. They, we embed ethics, technology, and diversity throughout the program. Those strands run through all the sessions that Linda will have with them. There's an ethics test they have to take. How do they integrate technology? How do they do it the Forsyth way, too? So that's important. And then the diversity part, you know, we have some people that are going to be at high school, but the idea is that they need to know what's going on at middle and elementary. Or maybe they're special ed self-contained, but they need to see what's going on in other special ed classes. So they will have field experiences that'll take them through those different things. Say that they're not at a title school. We will want them to have some experience at a title school so that they can just round out their experience and their background. They also have to take the same test that everybody from the university also, they have to take. So they'll pass the Gaze test, then they'll take that EDTPA at the end. The EDTPA is a, and it's an assessment that they have, they assess their planning ability, their teaching, and they're evaluating students. And it's basically a portfolio that they work on for about a year. And we're going to give them that support. It's a big, big deal. It's a big deal at the university, too. So we're going to give them as much support as we can. They send off a video. They have external reviewers that review and then decide if they pass or not.
Wow.
So they will get support in that as well.
Yeah, no kidding.
To give you an idea of what the session, what the program actually looks like, it begins with a two-week, a two-week session titled Essentials of Teaching. Linda is in that session with the candidates right now, started last Monday. So we're in the second week of that. So they'll do 10 days of that. And that's really what do you need to know to hit the ground running? You know, what are the basics? What are, what's the foundation that we want to start laying with these candidates? And then there'll be lots of supports in the school. They'll have a mentor. They'll have those external supervisors that I talked about earlier. One of the things that we've added is they will have district job-alike support people. So say that, because what happens is if you're a career tech person, you may not have another, you can have a mentor and it might be a good teacher, but they may not be teaching what you're teaching. And so we really came up with that idea at the beginning and connected with our people in teaching and learning and special ed. And so we assigned them one of those people and they'll go in periodically, once a semester, I think, and work with the teachers as well. There's a candidate support team that includes the candidate, Linda, that team of people I just talked about that meet once a semester and they talk about progress. It's all about progressing. It's not an evaluation thing at that point. It's just about progressing. We believe that it's affordable. What we decided to do was the candidates, the charge, the fee for the class is $3,000. So that's what, and we take it out of their check for 24 months. So it ends up being a little bit of an amount every month. If they finish the program and they are offered their third contract back, we'll reimburse $1,000 to them. So it ends up costing them a couple thousand. If they were doing this with one of the other programs that are nearby, it would be triple, it would be about triple that cost. So we feel like we're able to do it in-house and we're saving some money for our candidates as well. We have 14 candidates right now, one opening. We had 15. That was our limit and something happened with that one. We think that one might actually be coming back on board with another school that had an opening. So we're excited about that. You'll see the way the numbers break down here, the areas. And I'll tell you what I'm most excited about is that seven of those special ed candidates that are going to be teachers are our parapros right now. So they are all in our system, working in the classrooms, excited about it, and they have that experience. And they're coming back to be teachers. So real excited about that. These are the schools where they'll be located. You'll see Piney and West have a couple and then the other schools there.
Forsyth Teacher Academy is also going to bring endorsements in-house because we have contracted with area rezas and we're ready to do it ourselves. So we can do it more cost-effectively and we can do a job for our teachers that really reflects the Forsyth County way. And so we're taking on a little bit first. We're starting with ESOL because that is an area of need and then our online teaching endorsement. So I'm working closely with our two ESOL people, Michelle Slaton and Susan Norris, and then with Jason Nail to design the online teaching endorsement. What's beautiful is I'm bringing knowledge of the PSC rules, the Professional Standards Commission rules, and the things that we need to do to be approved. And they're bringing all of their content knowledge. And what is beautiful is that Michelle Slaton has used a distributed leadership approach. She has brought on former candidates, former instructors, and said, you know, what worked? What didn't work? What do we want to do? And so that, I think it's going to be a unique program and I think more than likely it'll be at the forefront of what the state is doing. So once we look at our impact, are the endorsements successful? Are we impacting student achievement? Are we seeing some benefits to the students? Then we'll go ahead and bring on the additional endorsements. But we felt that a measured approach would be best at first, just to make sure that we knew what we were doing and that we really were making a more positive impact.
We offer some endorsements now, but it's through Metro Reza and some of our people actually teach it, but it's their curriculum. So we're kind of tied to some of that. This will let it be solely our curriculum, our curriculum and our people teaching these endorsements. So we're excited about that. And then this really was not one of our first ideas, but this kind of grew out of the whole program. If we're working with induction and we're working with all of these teachers to help them improve their craft, then we feel like we are going to have a lot of resources to help principals who are working with teachers that may need to kind of improve what they do. You know, from time to time, a teacher needs some extra support and principals are always looking for ways to give them that support. And we feel like we will have through our online courses, we'll have some online modules and then some seminars that Linda is going to do. We feel like we'll have those resources then to help that. So that's our plan for the next year is to kind of branch out into that part of it.
Mike can make it easier for that teacher who does need a little help to feel that it's normal to have a situation like that and there's something already set up to help them.
Right.
It's not just unique to them.
Right. And we've realized in the past, we have some career tech people who've come in as a second, you know, it's their second profession, and they didn't get a lot of this extra help. And so we would like to give them some. You know, Valerie is helping us with that. And we're going to, we're going, where our plan is for next year to start offering that to some of our people that are already here.
For instance, over in the Alliance Academy, do they actually have teaching certificates? All of them do? That would be.
They do. They do right now. As we expand, that will.
Yeah, I did too. This is like a school within a school, really. And it's just amazing. I bet your numbers are going to be doubled next year, don't you think?
Yes.
That?
Well, it's in your program, too. So see, we'll have 15 in the program and we have to take at least 15 for the next year. It'll always, there'll always be that many. But yeah, we're looking to see if we can expand it. We just didn't want to get too big the first year and then not do it right.
Right, right, right.
It sounds like it's been a lot of work.
It has. It's worth it. It's worth it to get to this point.
I'm so impressed with the.
A lot of people helped. I'm telling you.
You've got a great team.
Yeah, a lot of people helped.
I stopped in and said hello to the cohort the other morning and I didn't ask for their feedback on how things were going so far, but they just raved about the start of the program and how already they feel a sense of, you know, connectivity to the school system and how, you know, clearly things are laid out and the opportunity to work together as a cohort and learn from one another and of course Linda facilitating. I think we're off to a great start, just getting the feedback from that first group of 15.
I'm excited.
It is.
Our principals are excited about it, too.
Oh, I guess. Yeah. Because you, I met a young girl at church Sunday and she is a former student here, graduated from West in 2011 and has a degree in education but doesn't have her certification. But she wanted to get back into teaching. And I said, "Oh." So she made a call. But she's young, enthusiastic, and she said, "So many of my friends have come back here to teach and she wants to as well." So it's just great to have that opportunity.
Thank you for allowing us to do that.
Good, thank you. That's great. Thanks for the presentation. All right, next on the agenda is the financial report. Mr. Grinder?
Long time no see.
Third time.
Third time's the charm again.
Different topic.
Thank you. You have before you the financial statements as of June 30th. First slide, statement of cash receipts and disbursements. Again, continuing the trend that will continue until we get to October, November, when we start receiving our property taxes, you'll continue to see this, continue to go down. So at the end of, still in great position though, at the end of June, almost $67 million in cash. So, but that's the reason why you continue to see the decrease and that's very typical. Year-to-date budget report, of course, keep in mind that June 30th is our fiscal year end. This is not necessarily the final report. We still have some accruals on the revenue side and expenditures side, which is normal. Typically, till the end of August, we're still accruing different items, which by Gadsby standards, we're allowed to do. You can see on the revenue side, right at 100%, it was off by $10,000.
Wow.
I will say, we do still have one title level on tax payment. We always get to record the July payment as a June because that's the period it relates back to. So that number will actually, should end up being around a million, one to a million two over for revenues. So that's good as well. Shouldn't be major adjustments to the rest of the revenue side. On the next slide, you'll see the expenditures, again, down at the bottom, 99.65% on expenditures, so under budget there, which is excellent as well. Again, we'll have some accounts payables and some other items. The major accruals we pretty much have in there is just stuff that'll come in over the next few weeks and next month or so. So no major changes on the expenditure side. Keep in mind that if you go to the third column year-to-date, actually, you'll see our total revenues and at the bottom, you see our total expenditures and you'll see a difference there of about $3.2 million. We had budgeted a little over $800,000 being added to reserves. I think the $3.2 is going to, because we do still have some encumbrances, you can see to the side, some items that are still to be paid for that will relate back to the expenditure side. I think we're still going to end up conservatively close to $3 million in fund balance or an increase in fund balance of around $3 million. But I'll, definitely as we get toward the end of August, early September, I'll give you all an update on that. But again, about, we're over $2.2 to $2.2 million over what we expected. And that continues a trend. And as we, you know, we've had conversations around the bond issue, that's very important to the rating agencies, which helps ultimately our interest rate. So as we continue to see where our actual results do better than budget, I do like to see that. Again, it relates back to conservative budgeting, which is very important to them. Next slide is our debt services cash analysis. We're in good shape here. Our payments on our bonds are due February 1st and August 1st. So we have a payment coming up, but we're in great shape cash-wise, you know, as we typically are to make those payments. So there's no, nothing really here other. We still have, you know, the SPOS 4 money and then also our SPOS 5 money. As we get that money in, we're investing that money and we have a layered approach to that with the consultant we're using on that. So we'll continue to invest that and eventually we'll be able to actually do some two-year treasuries out of that, which will get us an even better interest rate. We're very excited about that because that'll be more money we can put back into projects. On the next slide, you'll see our investment summary. You'll see that we have $30 million of our general fund money in treasuries right now. Those are coming due July and August, which is by design as our cash continues to decrease. That allows us to have some flexibility there and to get that money back, back into the cash balance. Again, these are same, as I mentioned, SPOS 5, you know, investments right now, we currently have $8.6 million. The $3.3 million that got transferred, there was a timing delay at the end of June. That money will actually, has actually been invested now. It was just a timing delay on the bank's part. So that actually ended up in cash at the end of the month, but that actually, that's, the investment is really closer to $12 million right now in SPOS 5. Next slide is our SPOS collections. Again, a positive trend here. Offsets the trend that we saw with, of course, less days, April compared to May. So the 109 offset the 105 and with spring break, too. As we mentioned last time, that definitely factored in. So we're right back on track. We're currently about $1.7 million over last year. So again, a very positive trend, roughly around 5% increase so far. You will notice the school reports are not here, which is typical in June, just because of the summer break. We'll bring those back in July. We have so many bookkeepers that are vacationing, just trying to get the informations a little bit more. So in the past, we've always presented both of those, June and July, at the August board meeting.
Looking good.
And that's my presentation. If y'all would be happy to answer any questions on that.
Anybody have any questions? No? We'll just stay right there and we'll go to our action items with the military.
Yep, I'll pull up that one slide just so we have the. There it goes. Eventually got it. Okay, you have before you, back on June 19th, the tentative millage rate that was recommended with, leaving the millage rate as is for the maintenance and operations at 17.3 and the debt service at 2.418. We have posted all the required eyes. We've also had the three hearings that are, public hearings that are required. So at this time, it is staff's recommendation to approve the final millage rate, MNO at 17.3 and the debt service at 2.418.
I'd recommend approval.
Somebody make a motion to approve the recommendation with superintendent?
So moved.
Motion from Nancy, second from Kristen. Any comments? All in favor?
Okay.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And now, discussion on Poole's Mill contract. What did you want to...
I just, I had a question. I know it's, I think with our meetings being on Tuesdays, a little, we used to have Thursdays, so we had more time to see documents. I, it's probably a good question for Bill. It might be a Tim question, but looking at the contract for, um, Poole's Mill, I mean, the price went up, which we saw that with East, which it's been a few years, so I expect an increase in price. But with, uh, DeSana and Brandywine, for example, we've got about half a cash in capital outlay from the Department of Ed. We've got seven point nine million for Brandywine, and so eight point four million in local funds. Just think of it as half. With Poole's Mill, it's a little higher in cost. I get that, but there's no capital outlay at all. Is that, it's just totally locally funded. Why is that? Is that, was it we haven't applied yet, or is it...
I don't think I'm...
Is that a Tim Amerson question, probably?
Yeah. I'm not. I'd have to ask you. I'm not prepared to answer that.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to answer that either.
Do you guys wanna...
I don't wanna delay it. I just, this is a big, it's a big chain. Or is it just not there yet?
Well, some, some schools, we can get locally funded. And I'm, I'm gonna talk in generalities, not on this specific case. But some schools, we have an allotment that will allow us to be funded partially by the state, and some schools, we don't. Um, I don't know that that is the case here, but that very well could be the case.
Doesn't have a...
We built many, many schools that were funded strictly by local funding.
Right.
And sometimes we take the funding and put it into a more expensive school, perhaps a high school or something like that, where we do have allotment and allows us to get more money from the state.
Yeah, we have to earn the allotments first.
I think it's all about timing, is what it is. It's by timing, is, yeah, but you can save up your money.
And I, I can't answer your specific question, but I can assure you that we were taking advantage of getting the most of money that we could and putting it toward the school where we could get the most.
I think I get what you're saying. I think, I think that's usually per grade level, like elementary credits and...
Correct. You know, if we have so many elementary classrooms and we only have so many elementary students, that's all the state is going to fund. And again, I'm not talking about, in this particular case, I'm just talking about in general. So, it very well could be that we didn't have enough allotment to be able to get them money from the state to make it worth our while. So, they put it toward the middle school or toward the high school.
So, this is the case, it's kinda we're doing what the public wants. We're actually kinda building ahead of our credits.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
In this case, I'm, I do not know the answer to that.
I can remember...
Get more specific answers for you.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, since we just got the stuff, it was, I didn't have a chance to reach out earlier, so.
'Cause I can remember in the past where we've waited because we didn't have enough credit.
Right, we, we, you have to say that. So, I'm saying, I think it's a whole thing of timing that you can save up and say, "We don't wanna use it now because we have the funds, we wanna get going on this project." And we, we save it for later.
It could also be...
It's not like you're losing it. I don't, you're not, you're not losing it.
We're not losing anything.
You're not losing anything at the state low.
And we're, we've got to, we're getting the most state money that we can for every single school.
Yeah, I know, I know they won't back reimburse us.
Correct.
I mean, once you pay for it, you're, you're done. But maybe this is just...
But we never, we will, well, I shouldn't say we never. Just never say never. In the past, we have never had a situation where we had state money do us that we didn't get.
Eventually, yeah, somehow we, we get it, right? Every little...
Right.
Basically, this is a certain budgetary guidelines for them to design around. This is the architectural design.
To give you, to give you kind of a example of that is we get more for new construction than we do for renovations. So, if you'll notice, we never bring much to you for renovations. We always put it towards new construction.
Make better banking.
Right.
Yeah, and without speaking with Tim specifically on this, you know, that would be my hypothesis as well, that he uses credits for other schools that we're going to be building to maximize the state funding that we're gonna receive. I mean, we, we can get, yeah, we'll, we'll talk to Tim and get a specific answer to all of you, but without asking him directly.
And really, what the action is tonight is just setting a boundary for them to design within. So, it doesn't really matter where it comes from for this.
It could potentially change as August is, well, August is going up. That's when they usually do the application, right?
Correct.
Well, yeah, what he's saying is, this is just for the architect of the school.
Yeah, it's a total budget amount.
We're saying we're gonna build a school that costs around twenty-one million dollars.
This doesn't have anything to do with state funding and how we get it.
So, realistically, we wouldn't be starting this, well, we don't have the money anyway, really, next year, the earliest. But we'd have a shovel in the ground at least after July, next year, not later.
We have to go through an approval process for that anyway. This is just to draw it up.
This is just to hire the architect home board.
So, maybe next year, we'll have accrued enough to put in for some money. So, that could change.
Yeah.
Just with Brandywine.
And it wouldn't change his contract.
This, it must've been with Brandywine.